So we still include those health benefits in there as well?
That's not in there. This budget does not include it.
Okay, what about, I know the court is missing an employee that they never filled since the last time that left that was a full-time position. Do we still have those health benefits?
That's not in there. There's two police officers that are going to be replaced from retirees that happened this year that are in this budget. So like I said, you're gonna have the retirees that are leaving and two new employees that are budgeted for. There's an electric line that's on the jetted table approved. That person's in the budget. And it was one other person, I believe. I'll have to look it up. So those people aren't in there, but the construction person is not in there anymore. They were in prior, but not this year's budget.
Okay.
And if one other person, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, who it was.
Like, we used to have the full-time at Parks and Rec, and now we just have part-time employees. Was that health benefit removed from?
That wasn't because she left end of February, early March, so that wasn't removed. So that, I believe, is still in there.
I'm just trying to...
But she, that was single coverage. That was a small, I mean, I honestly wouldn't have removed that because it was, it wasn't really a significant amount. It was only single coverage.
Okay. Just that, that three hundred thousand seems like a lot to me, but I'm not sure as to how much a health benefit is for each employee, so I wouldn't know.
It's significant. Especially retirees, it's very significant. But if you just hold on, I'm trying to find the other person.
Mr. Zenga, would you estimate at what, thirty-three to forty percent in terms of health benefits?
Health benefits?
French benefits and...
About fifty to sixty percent probably. It's where a full-time person with health benefits, with social security, FICA tax, dental coverage, pension costs. Yeah, pension costs are up to sixty percent for PERS and thirty-three point two five percent for PFRS, which is police. So every time a dollar that's pensionable, the borough pays that share for them. So that, that pension costs go up every single year significantly. Health benefits goes up significantly. We try to stick to the two percent levy cap, but everyone who passes costs, that's why if you've heard my speech when we introduced it, all the pass-through costs, which is sewer treatment costs, pension costs, health benefits, all seem to be higher than two percent. But they all want to expect the boroughs to stay at two percent. So it becomes very challenging in all municipalities to try to do this when everyone who sends us a bill raises it four to six percent, or sometimes pension costs are ten percent, you know. So we try to do it though, but...
Another one that I saw was that code enforcement. We did put an extra, almost thirty thousand dollars in that line item with only one employee in code enforcement.
Correct. It's gonna be the same situation as construction. So if we can find another part-time person to back up Tom when he's away, or do extra hours and more hours, then they'll be hired to cover that salary.
Okay. And then I also saw with court, it was still, we're still one employee down, but yet we're raising it up almost forty thousand dollars in salary and we're just there.
We transferred out of, that's why, so it really, it went down actually from last year, but we transferred a significant amount of money because we never hired the second full-time court administrator. So this year, we have the one full-time deputy, one full-time court administrator, and a part-time one she's working on that will come in front of council to hire.
Okay.
So right now, with court being Zoom still, she can get away with one full-time deputy and one part-time deputy. Eventually, we might have to go back to a full-time deputy, but the court administrator agreed to this too when we talked budgets this year. She said she can handle a part-timer.
Is that why that we, I guess, spent less last year because we never filled that position?
Correct, correct.
So we're hoping to fill that position this year, is what you're saying?
Yes, we're gonna fill it with a part-time person right now, and then she's gonna reassess where she stands. If they come open back up to the public, right now it's still Zoom, if everything's open back up and she needs that to be full-time again, we're gonna come in front of council in next year's budget. Could, could include that. But she's gonna see how she stands now with a part-time person if she can make it work.
Okay.
So she's on board with that too. She's one who, we talked to Art Knight, she goes on board and agreed to it, so.
Are, are we also down any employees in public works?
I don't think so.
Because we budgeted for forty thousand more in salary and wages for public works.
What happens in, it's part of their contractual agreements. A lot of them, when they get step increases, there's sometimes more than two percent in the step increase. So there's no new hires in public works.
We have a, we're only...
Or replacement mechanic.
Yeah, the mechanic is gonna retire, that's right. But that's gonna be a replacement, not a new hire.
And I saw, well, that's not the budget, but I'll, I'll discuss that later. The board of health, we also budgeted for less than what we spent last year. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, it was a very small amount because the health, what health is, the registrar, the deputy registrar and the health secretary, the person who retired last year was making more than the person that's there now. So when they got hired, they went back down to a level where other secretary positions are for those boards, so.
Okay, so that's why we...
That's why, that's why it's less this year than last year's budget.
I did see on the office on aging, there wasn't the amount that we spent last year, but it did say that we, what we budgeted was thirty-five thousand, and this year we're asking for eighty thousand. Where does that come from?
She received grants for all her salaries last year. So we were actually extremely lucky that the county started giving us more money for her grants, and almost all the salaries for that whole entire department were covered. If we didn't get any grants, it'd probably be a hundred and something thousand in our department. We budgeted whatever we budgeted for last year, and then she started receiving more grants, which covered all the salaries in total. So we actually ended up not having to spend anything last year because the county started giving more money to the borough. So this year, the county gave less to us right now. Now, they might still come back in the summer and say, we have twenty thousand more, would you like it? We'll say yes, you'll approve it. And then we might not have to spend the money, also, and just go towards a grant. So we were lucky to get all that money last year, and that, that covered almost everything.
Okay, Parks and Rec also, we're, we're budgeting for twenty thousand more. Are we planning on making any of the part-time full-times, or are we just keeping part-times for now?
No, that's, I think, the one guy moved over to Parks last year. His salary was higher than somebody who went to a different category. And step increases also, contractual agreements are all in there. So there's no new hires, there's nothing new. It's just what they make and goes with their contract.
That wasn't for Parks and Recreation for the Recreation Department, that line item? Are you saying it's Parks and Recreation for DPW or Parks and Recreation for the department?
There's recreation and there's Parks and Rec. So recreation runs through the Recreation Department, which is the director. The summer help kids we hire.
Will go through recreation.
Yeah, but the Recreation, Parks and Rec runs through health works, which is the guys that cut the grass and do all that stuff.
Okay. The UCC salaries went up thirty-seven thousand dollars more this year from what we budgeted last year, and we spent less than what we did last year. Is that because we plan on, what do we plan on doing there with no full-time?
No, some of the ones you're saying went up. It's what they originally started with, but we transferred a lot of money out in November. If you go back to November's, October's resolution, December, we transferred money out of UCC Office on Aging to cover other lines. So we actually didn't spend the money, but remember, when we talked about last year, there would be full-time positions in there. When we didn't have them, we transferred out and went to a different line. So this year, that has exactly what we've discussed, all the part-time people, the construction official, the full-time secretary is in construction right now.
Okay. And then we have no money budgeted in this budget for road improvement, correct?
No.
We used to have a line item to be able to bond for road improvement, and we don't do that anymore?
We have a down payment line, which is the capital improvement fund. That's seventy-five thousand. That's to put down on five percent to do a bond ordinance, and then we have seventy-five thousand for park improvement. So the road ordinance that was approved last meeting or the meeting before was through a bond ordinance. So we put out five percent down, which came, comes from the budget, and the DOT money and the rest is gonna be borrowed and paid back through the budget for debt services.
It's in the capital budget.
Yeah, it's in the capital budget too, yep.
Okay. I mean, for the last three meetings that we brought up the budget, I've said the same thing that's been brought up today. We told our residents we'd have a full-time construction official. We told, we said that we'd be looking for a full-time VA eventually, and none of that is included into this budget. So we can say, yeah, probably it'll happen, but there's no definite answer because on this budget, we do not have that. So I don't know how we can tell our residents that we're listening to them if, we're not listening to them if we pass this budget today. I see a lot of things going up. I understand that the cost of everything is going up, and things need to be improved, but we're still not looking at our infrastructure. We have nothing in our budget for our infrastructure. We don't have any planning. We've spent lots of money on our water department, and our residents are still complaining because our infrastructure has not been touched. There's nothing in this budget for infrastructure. How can we be planning for the future and for our residents if we're not looking into ways to implement that now? Anybody?
Mayor, if I may, as I said last meeting, the amount of money that we spent in the last two and a half years for infrastructure, you said, you made a blatant statement that we have to stop talking and, excuse me, and do things. Well, we have been. And if you look at the amount that we bought with equipment, with sewer lines, water lines, everything in town has been upgraded. We're starting to work on the electrical system now as an upgrade for the infrastructure. So what you're just saying, nothing is being done, is totally false. Everything is being done. And if you can specifically say what you think should be done, we can look into it. But if you can't, everything is going forward with equipment, pole trucks, bucket trucks, garbage trucks, plows, dump trucks. Everything for the infrastructure is being done to help the residents and continue the services that we provide to the borough residents. So I, I don't know where you're saying nothing is getting done. You can see just by the amount of new equipment we have going around town.
How many water lines have we cleaned or replaced or improved? Or how much money, well, we're talking about a budget. So how much money do we have in the budget right now to replace, or any type of water issues besides the water treatment plant? What do we have in the budget for that this year?
Water has five hundred thousand in what they call capital outlay, which can be used for water lines, which we usually do, or other capital work. In my opinion, that's a significant, depends on the town's size. So we used to put about two to three hundred thousand, but there's five hundred thousand in there now.
How much did we spend last year on water infrastructure?
I think maybe three, I think it was like three hundred and something thousand. But no, you do, you do bond ordinance, it's two for water, and that covers a lot. So like they're doing the well project, it's, it's almost complete. All the ordinance that we do for water, cover the water infrastructure. The treatment plant, the wells, lines, all that stuff, valves, you know, stuff like that that we still do. But I'll take a second on water. Yeah, water right now, there's five hundred thousand dollars in capital outlay. Last year, we spent three hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven forty-six and sixty-one cents.
And what was that spent on? The water treatment plant?
Everything. Water treatment plant, water lines, valves. Every time we find a valve, it's very expensive for me to do a valve. So it's easier for the water department to shut off. So it's everything that's water-related. That would be a capital ordinance.
And when do we do water, water valves? When we have water main break?
No, when they find that something, usually when they find something that needs a valve. So the water department will go out and say, we can't shut off something here. It's gotta shut off three blocks worth. Why don't we put a valve in? That'll make it where only three homes need to be shut off. And then we discuss it, we talk about it, and usually on the contract, BW will do it. And then they'll go out and put a separate valve in so that three blocks won't have to get shut off, only three homes, say. So yeah, when water department determines that they come to Art, usually, and us, and we charge it there.
I don't wanna get off the topic of the budget. I did ask for the, for an agenda discussion, actually, to get a proposal done for water maintenance. And that was because I feel like everything we end up doing is an emergency, and we don't plan to repair existing stuff. When, when our residents keep complaining about yellow water, and all we can say is the pipes are shook and that's what happens, there has to be a better solution. So again, our budget, you know, we don't even have a proposal then to know what our expense would be to replace or clean out, or do some type of maintenance for our water mains. So that was my question. And as you say, things are very expensive, and we have five hundred thousand, and last year we spent three hundred thousand. What are our plans to improve our water mains and our water? We've got the water quality down because we've spent almost a million dollars on our water treatment plant, but if the water's not getting there clean, what does that result? So that was my concern with maintenance and equipment. And I understand that infrastructure is not only what's underground. Yes, we get equipment. Yes, we do things. But our main concern lately has been our water fees. And if we're not listening or actually attempting to get an actual proposal and a solution down, how can we say we are, you know, listening to our residents?
Mayor, if I may, again, the water mains, a few years back at the previous administration, we got a grant to pave some roads. And it was just for paving. And we were notified that we should replace the water main and the sewer main on that particular road. And the previous administration says, no, we're not spending anything extra in just paving the road. Well, six months later, they had to dig the road up to replace the water main. So what you're saying is a plan, there was plans and people have recommended, and previous administrations have turned it down. So again, we're trying to do what we can do with the amount of money that we have available and not burdening the taxpayers with absorbent amount of increases in their taxes. So we've been working on that, and we've got a lot accomplished over the last couple of years. And the taxpayers haven't had a major burden on their financial money. So that's what we're trying to do. And it seems to be working, and just, you know, other, other avenues didn't seem to wanna spend the money, and that's why we're in a predicament we are now.
So, Mr. Mayor, if, if I may?
Yes?
There, there is a plan that the borough adopted in August of 2019, an asset management plan that Mr. Koch firm worked on, which gives us a actual plan that's spread out over...
I think fifteen years, Art, if I remember correctly?
That we are trying to adhere to. As you know, we have stimulus money from the government. But one of the problems we are now getting into, you know, we were doing an inventory of homeowners' lines. Under legislation passed by the state, other state mandate, not state pay, we are under orders to replace those lines within a period of time. We've already identified twenty-four homes. That's roughly five hundred thousand dollars that we have to come up with. That may come from the stimulus money. So the money that we plan to do more lines may be taken away to do a state mandated program. Also, we just had a conference call with DEP last week about the progress we're making on the well, the progress we're making in the plant. And there was some suggestions that we change some of our treatment materials. That's gonna cost us money that we didn't intend to do, but it may clean the pipes. It may give a better cleaning. We're using a line right now. We're talking about switching to caustic. There's another chemical, maybe Mr. Koch would know the type of chemical. There is a chemical you can put through the system, and you have to do a heavy flush to clean out the pipes.
Trying to remember its name, Mike, but I know what you are talking about. I apologize.
So we're working on all these things. Unfortunately, between time costs, the supply chain now, it's taking us longer than we would like. But as we find the more new equipment we replace, the more old equipment that starts to fail. We just came up with a backwash pump that has to be repaired. Just got the estimate over my phone about twenty minutes ago, forty thousand dollars. You have to repair that. It's an emergency. So we intend to do things when we budget for it, but it's very, as you said, the infrastructure needs repair. It's a very expensive proposition. I think at one time, somebody said we could replace all the lines in town about five hundred million dollars if I remember. Or one fifty, fifty, you know, fifty, fifty something, fifty something. But, you know, we'd like to do that too. But we'd also like to keep the taxes down in that two percent level, not to put a big burden onto the taxpayers. So it's a difficult game to play. I think we do an excellent job to help the engineering firm, help the CFO. We've made great strides in the last three years. Thank you.
Art, is it possible to get a copy of that plan?
There's only, I think, two originals. I could loan out one of the originals. Because it's quite extensive to reproduce. And I think we, one copy had to go to the DEP.
Yeah, sorry. Do you think it's worthwhile, you know, for our residents to have, you know, some knowledge based on what it costs, what it, you know, what we're looking at? Would it make sense to maybe do a workshop, you know, and I know this is kind of off-topic, but relates to the budget, to show residents, hey, this is what we're looking at in terms of fix the water lines. And this is what we're looking at. This is what the plan is.
Anything that you'd like us to do, we can do. Right now, the problem is the costs aren't settled. Some numbers we've gotten now have changed because of the supply chain and manpower. We're, we're finding out that these companies are having trouble getting people to work for them. So I'd be glad to do that. It would take a while to put together.
Yeah, I'm happy to help. I just think if we can do something to be transparent, I think I could go along with it.
I mean, we can, we can give them numbers on what it costs to replace every foot of pipe, rough numbers, what it costs to, you know, maintain the system. I mean, we've all known for years, we have an infiltration system in the sanitary sewer lines. That means waters, storm waters leaking into the sanitary sewer, which go through a meter and which we're paying for at the MC way to replace your sewer lines. Also, it's very expensive and costly, and time, it's a time issue, big problem, whether you line them or replace them. And we found sometime, we'd like to line them. It's not possible, right, Mr. Koch?
Some areas are difficult to get through. Yes, there are problems.
But, you know, it's on my list.
I know it's a long list, but...
It's on the website. Is it on the website? I'm not sure. I think it's on the website. Art?
Mr. Wanda, I understand that the, the process will take a long time for us to clean up every line that we have. My, my request, or what it was that I added to the agenda for tonight, was at least to get a proposal, to know what we are looking at. Because it's hard to just tell people it's gonna be too much money if we don't know how much or how we can get there. Other towns clean their, their water lines every other year. They have that in place already or in their budget already. And I'd like to see, why can't we look ahead that way as well and see, you know, what portions we could start off with to see if we can get them?
Forgive me, but I think that's just what he said, that he showed you, and he showed you that report. Am I, am I wrong in that?
Well, when you say clean the lines, I, I don't think they actually have companies coming in every year and clean the lines. They may be doing exactly what we're doing right now, flushing hydrants. And after we get through that process, you know, God willing, and we don't have any repairs that will be done, then the lines are cleaner, but they will flush. But, you know, no, no matter what it is in the lines that you're dealing with, the water is stagnant, you know. And residential use is a slower use than commercial. We don't have huge commercial uses, mostly residential. So you don't get a lot of movement unless there're fire or a water main break or a valve break. And then, you know, to, to keep our water, especially now, we're starting in the month of May, people are starting to get out and water their lawns and clean their cars, and the usage is going up. We've, we've noticed it. We have to keep our tanks filled. It's, it's a, you know, we, we try not to buy as much water for these brands as we have in the past. That's why we're putting the new wells online and getting the permits from the DEP to possibly use more of our water. It's, it's a tricky thing to do that. Yeah, I, I really don't think there are that many towns bringing a company to clean their lines every year. You know, if you clean the lines every year, you're gonna, those pipes are gonna get worn out faster. If you see on Nixles, I see Edison, Edison averaging four or five water main breaks a week. I, I don't know, their, their work is done by Suez, so if they have the machine to do that. It's a very expensive, very dangerous process. You find when you clean these lines, you break all things. So we're hoping that we get a pretty good feel from this full flushing that we're doing right now. When we finish that, we hope that'll move some of the water. But then again, anytime you have a water main break or a valve break, it's gonna upset the system. Unless you have brand-new pipes all over the system or brand-new plastic pipes that you replace, it's gonna upset the system. I know we started, we, we have a plan in mind to start from the plant and work our way out with some of the bigger mains. But it's, it's just, every time we try and get that plan done, something takes money away from it. It's not a, you know, you, you go a couple hundred feet with a water line, it's very expensive. It just costs us eighteen thousand dollars to replace a fire hydrant. Just imagine what a line costs to go, you know, half a mile. Mr. Koch could probably come up with a number.
Currently cleaning and lining like an eight-inch. Everything included in the project is probably approaching a hundred and fifty dollars a foot.
Foot.
Foot. Been creeping up over the years.
I understand that that packet was for the plan. I was just trying to see if we had an amount or a way to start the plan, Mr. Wanda. And that's where I was going with the budget.
Well, that's where the half a million dollars come in. We look at some of the schedule here and try to balance what we can do and the cost for it.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I have one more for Joe, I'm sorry. Mr. Zenga, I know last meeting, we, we did waive the partial interest on the payment. They have, what is it, thirty days? The funds that come in, hopefully they come in. Once they come in, that money is not utilized until next budget, correct?
Yes.
Or doesn't get utilized? And is there specific line items that hap, that, that those ones have to go to? Or is that hoping that...
It's gonna come in to link with tax revenue, which is gonna be higher than what we budgeted, and it's gonna end up in surplus at the end of twelve thirty-one of twenty-two, to be used in twenty-three if the council so chooses.
Okay.
So it's actually better to do it. It'll be sitting in surplus at the end of the year.
Okay.
Mr. Zenga, I have another question for you. Are we, are we finally paying our construction official for his duties?
We would like to. It's on the agenda for the salary ordinance to have the range. So once the ordinance is approved, then we can approve it by resolution.
Mr. Wanda?
Correct.
And then currently, he has both titles. So making that position, if next year he is not here, will we be, is that money already in the budget for at least a part-time construction official?
Correct.
For that department?
This budget includes a part-time construction official, correct?
Well, I'm confused now. Because he would still be here. There's a four-year appointment.
Correct, you're right. You're right.
He holds a four-year appointment along with the other...
For construction official?
Yeah, you're right. So there's no, there's not, don't take your role management on that scheme. It's not like you wanna get rid of him, but we can get rid of him. It's when his appointment actually expires, which is in twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. I had assumed that his appointment was, you know, when, when Mr. Lawrence, Lawrence passed away, I thought it was just an acting official. I didn't...
This is by state.
Okay.
The only difference this year is Art's actually gonna get a paycheck for doing the work he's done for years and never got paid. So there's money in the budget to pay a part-time construction official this year. Prior, he's been doing it, but not getting paid.
But there was still money in the budget for him to get paid?
Yes, he was just never approved to get paid by council. You gotta do a resolution to approve his salary. So the first we're doing is the salary ordinance to set the range, and then next meeting, probably, you'll see a resolution that says to pay the construction official something. And then you guys have, the council has to vote on it.
Is it legal for us to have him there for that amount of time without getting paid?
Yeah.
Art does numerous jobs here. I think he doesn't get paid, you know. Art does numerous jobs here, I think he doesn't get paid, you know?
Mr. Olanda, if maybe for our next meeting you do, or you just email it out, could you do a schematic of the building department, starting with himself as construction official? Because I keep hearing various terms being bagged about building inspector, code enforcement, construction official. They're being used as though they were all the same thing, and they're not. So if you could just do us a little drawing as to who, you know, I mean, because we sometimes talk about our electric inspector, who's a subcode official. Who's one in the same thing? So if you could just do that, we can figure out what, what it is. Is there anything else? I, I have a question to the chairman of finance. Is the finance committee in favor of this budget?
Yes, finance committee has approved the budget.
Okay. Then with the members and the way I'm counting it, I feel that we do have the four votes. So I'm going to ask that officially a motion to be made to approve the budget?
You can just call, call for a vote.
Okay, then. A yes vote is in favor of the budget and no vote is against the budget. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
No.
Councilman Olivera?
Yeah.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Budget has been adopted. Thank you to the finance committee for your all, your hard work. As the government funding, asking the government questions, your hard work. I thank you professionals. We release Mr. Zanga. Where else?
Good night.
Mr. Zanga, who's our auditor, he was here in case there were any questions. But Mr. Zanga did an excellent job. Definitely pitching a no hitter tonight. On with the agenda. The agenda session. Do you have any other questions concerning the water main infrastructure, Councilwoman? Or were they answered during the budget hearing?
I guess it's my understanding that we have a plan. But my question was, how do we move forward from our plan? Do we get proposals for anything or are we just waiting to see what happens?
Mr. Olanda, are we moving forward on the plan?
Now that the budget's been approved, we can sit down with the D P W director and the consultant and the engineer and plan what we can do this year. We have to make a decision on the lead lines, how many we want to do. I mean, do we do just what the state requires as a minimum? Or where we found them? Do you want the homeowner to have them replaced as soon as possible? If you want to do whatever we find as soon as possible, then that's going to impact how much we can do to the rest of the infrastructure.
Mr. Olanda, is that from house to the water main or is that?
From, if I'm correct, Mr. Cox, you can always correct me. It's from, even though our ordinance says our responsibility is from the main and the homeowner is from the tap in the main into the house, our responsibility is to replace everything.
From the, right. If it's a special, and then it's from the corporation on the main to the meter.
And, you know, we're trying to tie this into our meter program that you've already authorized the engineering work for. But you also have to understand, we have to look at the houses. It's easy if the house has a basement. The house has a slab, we might have a problem on our hands.
Just unmoving meters that are outside to pits.
Tricky.
And that's expensive.
Now that the budget's adopted, I'll put it on the list. I'll move it up closer, up to the top.
And, and the state's not providing financial support to?
Absolutely not.
No.
They're telling us to use our stimulus money to do it. We have to pay for it.
Zero.
And if they do come up with money, it won't get past Newark, Trenton, and Camden.
It won't get to us.
Literally will not trickle down, just how sure. Correct?
But we'll try our best.
Okay. I put down demand relief nonprofits and board of education. That's to turn the budget. Mr. Zanga, are we prepared for that?
Yes, you can if the council so chooses. You put on the agenda usually and you decide whether you want the resolution to come in front of your next meeting. If you guys, if the council decides, I'll get a resolution going over it and do this.
Normally we do this for the summer months to give relief to the nonprofits and board of education. Is the council in favor of this for this year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be?
So it'll be next meeting or July or June 13th, I'll have a resolution.
And then we do from June 30th to September 1st, is that what you think?
July, August, September, so July 1st to September 30th. Yeah, these are three months. Yeah, so July 1st though.
September 30th?
Yeah, so July, August, September, yeah. July 1st to September 30th.
The last matter, it's come to our attention of that there are residents operating Airbnbs in our borough. We don't know exactly how many, three, four, maybe more, maybe less. We may see more of them. Different towns handle this matter differently. Some have past ordinances not allowing them and others have ordinances regulating that. I put this on the agenda, I'll have to think about it over the next few meetings and decide. Do we want Airbnbs in town? Do we want to regulate them? What do we want to do? So I'm calling back to your attention and we will revisit this in the next meeting or so. Moving on, the agenda, ordinance is second reading by, second reading for a public hearing, 2022-14. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Make a motion, wait before reading.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilman Seola, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. To wait before reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, if there's anyone who should come forward and talk about this matter, make comments, ask questions. We do so now, please give your name and address on first call, second call, third call. Motion by Mr. Gindy to close, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Moving.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Kertensky. This? Okay. Then perhaps my comments will be answered by your questions, please.
Will we answer? I'm just wondering with the Overton Street runway, have we reached out to the residents regarding that?
Yes.
Public safety?
They are in favor of it, very much so.
Okay. The other one is Marion Street Parkway, it's only a small portion of it. Willett Avenue. I've gone around there several times in that timeframe. I haven't seen an issue. And I had reached out about last meeting where I thought by the school, there was a no left turn into the school parking lot. And we had done that at one point and then removed it because it was no longer an issue. I'm just concerned if this is the same thing. If we're going to implement something, then it will no longer become an issue. And we've only had like 30 more days left in school. So I'm just curious to know, you know, how it became only an issue now.
Chief, would you like to answer that?
From my understanding, our traffic safety officers, as you know now, will back up to full complement of officers over the last several years. Traffic safety is back up to a full complement. So they've been going around and looking at the traffic that's created during the school, during the school hours. And one of those issues was the left turn that was going out to Hillside. And we, the crossing guard made, made a statement that, that would be helpful with the traffic. You know, during the morning hours, I don't know if you, if you see it, but we actually had an officer for like 15, 20 minutes alleviate the traffic on Willett and Johnson.
Correct.
And when we do that, when we have all those cars going down Willett to make that left turn onto Hillside, if we stop that, then the traffic will move, will move further down the street. Where it'll be smoother that way. So we can put, we can put an officer on the corner of Willett and Johnson, but then when it gets to?
The officer on Willett and Johnson now does phenomenal to get that traffic going. Because I feel like, I mean, you guys might not do drop off at the schools.
I get to, I get to watch it every morning now.
Getting the school system and the flow going, because of the way drop off is, now everybody does come down Johnson. And I feel like, and then if you're not letting half the town go back up Hillside, because they're going specifically down from that area to go back up, now you're making them go all around town to go back to where they're coming from. So I feel like.
Well, it'll bottleneck if there are cars that are trying to go down Willett to go make a left onto Hillside. It'll bottleneck there because the cars that are coming up Willett to go to school won't let them make that left turn. So where that officer is standing there, he can let all the traffic go through, but to his right, there's going to be traffic because the people are trying to make a left onto Hillside.
Well, that was just my opinion on it. I do go through there a lot and I see that the flow of traffic goes that way because that's the only way to allow the kids to be dropped off for school. So now I think I decide to be relaying the traffic to go further into town and back around. That was just my input. That's all I have to say.
Okay, anyone else? Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
No.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance is first reading by title only. We have several of them, 2022-15. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance authorizing various federal housing and community development grant improvements and took them located in the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
May J. Ordance. I move that the council pass ordinance 2022-15 on its first reading by title only and the clerk should be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on May the 23rd at 7:00 P. M. By video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion to adopt by title only by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
We will revisit this on the 23rd. 2022-16, first reading. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Mrs. Seola? I move that the council pass ordinance 2022-16 on its first reading by title only and the clerk should be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on May the 23rd at 7:00 P. M. By video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion has been made by Councilman Seola, seconded by Councilman Gindy. Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Okay, we will revisit this on May 23rd. 2022-17, our first reading. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending, an ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain borough officers and employees in the Borough of South River.
Mr. Seola? I move that the council pass ordinance 2022-17 on its first reading by title only and the clerk should be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on May the 23rd, 7:00 P. M. By video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
We will revisit this on May 23rd. Moving on to ordinance 2022-18, our first reading. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance to amend the Borough of South River, chapter 155, point 19, point 1, section 22, dash 62, add additional program and class fees.
Mrs. Seola? I move that the council pass ordinance 2022-18 on its first reading by title only and the clerk should be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on May the 23rd at 7:00 P. M. By video conference via Zoom or in the Criminal Justice Building located at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Olivera. Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Kertensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
We will revisit this on May 23rd. Moving on to our reports. Mr. Zanga, do you have anything to say? Roll call with Mr. Zanga first because that's his night.
He is, he's a star.
Just two things, the capital ordinance for HCD, that's last year's money, not the one you voted on a couple of months ago. So that was for Daley's Park and 88 Hours, Grackukowski. And the other resolution is a dedication by Ryder for the recreation. So now the recreation donation is going to be received for the recreation for certain programs and then expense on that program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything for Mr. Zanga? Oh, then we'll leave him alone. Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Posh?
I'm sorry, I have a question for Mr. Zanga. I know you somewhat explained this to me, but the water surcharge. So we have our water surcharge only one quarter a year. Can you explain for what it is used for and why we only get it once a year?
It was done many, many, many years ago. But I believe the idea was to have people stop and serving at certain times, like in the summer when everyone's using water. So I believe that is the idea of the surcharge. So that's been in it for many, many years.
Based on the percentage of water that they use that year?
Their bill, that, that, that quarter is built from the period that it relates to.
What is the percentage of the surcharge?
I think it's five. I believe it's probably, I believe it's 5%.
Okay. I'm asking this because I guess last quarter, when the water bill came out, a lot of people that billed a surcharge out of the, the month that they were supposed to be billed. So a lot of people got credits. And they had no idea why they were receiving credits. So they're only supposed to get surcharged for the summer quarter, I believe.
The good thing is the borough picked up on the first. So we picked up on it in December and January, contacted the building company, worked out a way to do it, and that's why people receive credit. So they would charge us, like, half of when the period was supposed to end. So now we're reimbursing the person, the surcharge that was charged.
Okay. And so if anybody else shows up with a surcharge that was out of term, they can still be reimbursed for that?
Absolutely, but they shouldn't have one because they did a thorough search. We did one also, and we believe we got every single person that was given that surcharge in that period of time that shouldn't. Everyone should receive the credit then.
And then I guess somebody asked me, they received a credit, but not the full credit of what the surcharge was.
Well, could they?
Could that be a mistake or could it just be?
No, but remember the surcharge ends, I believe, September 30th. I don't have the order to find it, but so if someone got a bill in October, their July, August, order, August, September, and part of October bill, they only, shouldn't have been charged a surcharge from October 1st to whenever the bill came in. Prior to that, they might have gotten a service charge. So we went back and the billing company did a thorough job on it. We reviewed it also. So I believe it's correct. So anyone who received the credit should be exactly what they deserve.
So all of our residents received their three quarters at different months of the year?
Yeah, not everybody gets the same bill.
Not everybody gets it at the same time, four times a year?
Yeah, they get four bills a year, but it's all different cycles.
Okay. Is that by like?
Your bill might be different than, say, Councilman Kertensky's. He might get it a different month than what you get.
Okay. But is it like done by portions of town or is it just?
Yeah, it's done by sections because we have meter readers. Yeah, it's done by sections because we have meter readers, you can't read the whole entire town every single month.
Correct.
It's virtually impossible. So they have sections where they go each, each time, it's like 30 something cycles. So they go and do a cycle each time, certain cycles will be rolled in certain periods. So you'll get four bills a year, but your bills might be, you know, January, April, July, and whatever it's October. Councilman Greczynski's might be February, some, some, some.
Okay.
It's not all at the same time.
All right, that was my only question to clarify why people that surcharge is in credits. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Posh?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The 2020-2021 road paving work is underway. Uh, we're starting on Ferris Street, they're working on that now, we'll be moving to Clayton Court later in the week. I did send an email out to the contractor reminding them that they must have a water truck, which they do, and not to leave vehicles overnight that might have hazardous liquids in the bed of the truck or something like that. I believe I copied Mr. Wondenski and Mr. Zenga with that just so that it would be up front. Outborne Street to 20, well, pardon me, the 2021 roadways, uh, that's included in this. In 2022, uh, we are working on design, it's going along well. 2023, I just got a letter from the DOT that they're accepting applications for the new round of funding. So those must be submitted by the July 1st of this year, with the resolution to follow by July 31st. The electrical substation work, well, we are processing the payment for the contractor for what they've done to date. They're just waiting for the work on the battery project to get in so they include the work on their sweeps and cables and not be in conflict with that project. Well number two replacement, uh, there was a meeting on the 28th of last month with the DEP where they did an inspection. I'm told they were pleased with what they saw. On Wednesday, there's another DEP, uh, will be out to do a water sample. The contractor will be there to operate the well to pump water overboard so the DEP can take the sample. And the housing and community development, I did send a memo to the governing body just outlining what had transpired on the virtual meeting that was held. And that is it, I believe. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir? For DPW?
Yes, Mayor, we started hydro flushing today, and we'll be doing it for the next three weeks until May 19th. Also, if you haven't picked up your reusable bags yet, we'll be giving them out this Saturday, the 7th, and next Saturday, the 14th, at the DPW yard by the recycling center from 8:00 to 12:00. And we're also looking for summer help for the DPW. Uh, you must have a high school diploma or its equivalent and a valid driver's license, New Jersey driver's license. And also, we repaired the manhole by pantry by Will Oak.
Yes, thank you.
It's all right.
Very happy about that. Any questions?
Hi, doing, Jim. Um, I do see on our resolutions we're hiring one in, uh, summer help. How many do you plan on hiring for this year?
Hopefully four, three more.
Okay.
But we only had one applicant so far, so.
Page?
Yes.
How many guys are we down, um, starting the sanitation? Or, or more like, what's the ideal number?
We have 10. Ideal number is 11 for sanitation. Roads.
Question?
Parks are good. Electric. All good.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Chief?
Mayor, the only after report that's starting next week is, uh, National Police Officer Week. Uh, with that being said, uh, next Wednesday on May 11th, I invite everyone at 5:00 P.M. we're gonna be having our police memorial service, uh, right, right here in front of police headquarters, uh, where we'll be adding two names to our memorial wall. Uh, two officers that, that passed away through the last year is Lieutenant Carl Rossi and Sergeant Walter Sidney Kovac, uh, better known as Blackie. Uh, they'll be putting up, we'll be putting them up on a wall, uh, next week. So I invite everyone to that memorial service. Next week. That's it.
Thank you. Anything for the chief?
I have one question, Chief. Do we, are we doing the, like, the bike rodeo or anything this year?
We're doing abbreviated bike rodeo. Uh, we have old bicycles that were donated from Walmart, there's a couple other bike companies that have donated to us. Uh, we're not actually doing the, um, how do you put it, how do I put it?
The event?
The event that we usually have, schools are doing, they're doing some kind of raffle within the school system. So all the students know about it. Should, that information should get sent home with the kids.
Okay. My other question was, you guys started your lead program, when does that finish?
Um, I know that it was done in, done in sections. Uh, I know Officer Stone taught the second section last week. I'm not sure if there's another section that has to be done.
Were they doing like the graduation?
No.
This year, no? Okay, that was it.
Madam Clerk, anything to report?
Um, excuse me, thank you.
Okay. Madam Attorney?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Our business administrator?
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mayor. First of all, we also are advertising for a part-time clerk in 48 Washington Street. So far, we've only gotten two applications. So the date is still open for another week or so. We'd like to bring that person on for next council meeting. So if anybody, if anybody who is available to work part-time, please get to us. Second thing is, uh, we have already started and will continue to send out, uh, notices to delinquent people in our utility department. Any customers that are delinquent, we are offering them a program to pay their delinquency off in a program of 12 months, plus paying their current. Anyone that does not answer that, um, will be shut off after a certain notice from the time of the announcement. We are also sending some people through their electric bills, the same offer to offer. But now, if you don't accept the offer, the Borough will start on disconnection. Uh, the last thing is the power of Nixel, um, just received a Nixel. Due to equipment issues, Middlesex County Road Department has canceled the paving of Whitehead Avenue for tomorrow, Wednes, and Wednesday. An update will be sent when new dates are scheduled. That's all I have. Thank you.
Art? Do we have an update on the construction, uh, the equipment for, I know the equipment is, is in for the parks. Has the construction companies still applied a date yet?
I don't think we've been though quite yet.
For the install of the playground equipment?
They're still saying June, uh, so that's what we're anticipating. I haven't heard anything different yet.
Okay. And then at Barga Park slash Pacers, is there any way, uh, Age, I don't know if you've seen it, some of the benches are, the cement block is starting to lift up and, you know, it's elevated off the ground a little bit. Is there any way for us to just rip those items? I have pictures that I can send you guys. You know, I don't know if it's safe for anyone to sit there, but we're from that.
We were just talking about, me and Joe, we recently had a bench replacement. Okay, sorry, mentioned.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Wondenski, I have a question for you. Uh, I did see on the bill list that we have, of course, Agra's a big expense to us with their monthly charges. Are we still paying them for the water operator, is that why?
Absolutely. That's not that bill, um, both bills. They had some turnover in personnel, and they had not been billing us. They just figured it out. So we just got the bill today, it'll be on the next bill list.
Okay. Do we plan on getting our own water operator, or is it beneficial?
Yes.
With Agra?
Yes, we are, we are talking to a couple of individuals to possibly, um, propose hiring them as supervisor, um, because Agra at this, they too would like to get their personnel back to other, um, positions. It's been quite a while since we've hired them to be the water operator. So we have someone in mind, we have to reach out to him, see if he's interested. That'll be the first one, then we'll start, um, reaching out to some other people.
Okay, is that something we're gonna advertise or are we just booking ourselves?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, if the licensed position of this person is ready to start the process.
And then my last question for you would be the, um, the web domain. Did we resolve that situation, the issue we were having with our web domain? We all received an email that, um, their web domain hasn't been paid because they're sending it still to our last provider?
Oh, okay, it's an email that we don't need, don't need that.
We don't, we don't need that.
Because we have Civic.
Yeah, Civic plus, taking care of hosting under our contract. We keep on telling the individual that, um, his hosting wasn't required, they hosted.
He stopped, he's still getting the alerts, I think, right? Is that the email he sent that he's getting the alert?
Yeah. From what I understood was like, we haven't paid to keep our South River NJ.org domain.
We did it to Civic website, our Civic website, everything went through there. So the prior thing we have to pay, we used to have to pay separately for the domain, that went away. And I believe Target, I don't, somebody responded to him while back saying that we don't need to do it anymore. Civic records, Civic website handles it all now.
Okay. I just wanna make sure you don't wanna lose our...
Yeah, no, it's all runs through, we did lose it like a year or two ago, there was an issue with it at one point, but now it runs through the website company, so it should be fine.
Okay.
Council comments on the various liaisons? Mr. Gindi?
Thank you. Our next planning board meeting is going to be May 17th. This is a meeting that you probably wanna come out to because we are going to be talking about the master plan. We have quite a few committees that will be joining in, um, to, uh, throw ideas around, which is gonna be held at Weave right here at the courtroom. Actually, they're gonna be splitting it apart, so probably gonna have to announce it.
Middle School. Let's forget the cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
We're worried about the location, so it's gonna be at the middle school. The starting board meeting, uh, is gonna be, uh, on May 24th. As you know, at the last meeting, they just passed a improvement, or I should say, a total facelift on our beautiful Portuguese restaurant, Real Bar. So, um, our boards are not very active, and there are quite a few applications coming for us. Our last municipal alliance meeting, we spoke about quite a few things, and one of the things that we brought up was the car show. We have it scheduled tentatively on September 15th, which is going to be a Thursday right here on Main Street. So look out for more, uh, advertisement as it comes closer. And, um, it's lined up.
Thank you. Ballas?
Oh, yeah, just one thing, on the Memorial Day Parade, the plans are coming along very nicely. We have quite a few groups that are, are marching. There are work forms sent out to, uh, the athletic groups, all our civic organizations. If you haven't sent it back, please do if you, uh, plan on marching, because we, we do have an order and a section of how everybody's gonna line up. If not, if you can't find that form, you can also, uh, email to our chair, Teresa Hutchison at HutchisonTeresa@NSN.com. But we do have quite a list of everyone that's gonna participate, so it looks like it's gonna be a really nice turnout, people are looking forward to it. I know. That's it.
Page? Stroll, the board?
Uh, Parks and Rec, uh, we're looking at approving some new fees, uh, for different programings. Terry has done a great job. We have a mommy and me cheerleading program that's gonna be coming to town. We have adult and youth volleyball. Uh, had the opportunity to go visit the Under Armour Spring Football, Flag Football over in Saraville, something that we're gonna be bringing into town as well. There must have been over 500 residents, residents from South River, Saraville, surrounding area. Saraville is the only one in Middlesex County that has the Under Armour, uh, flag football, so it's exciting to be bringing that into town. We have a youth agility class. This was an idea by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and we have a quilting class that's also gonna be coming in, um, for our residents. Our next, uh, meeting is May 17th, and again, I just wanna give, uh, Terry a shout out, she's doing a phenomenal job, we're bringing new programs in, um, and I, it's just amazing to see everything happen. We had the opportunity to go to opening day at Little League, uh, that was a fun experience. I wanna wish all the players, uh, luck and make sure they're safe this year. And in terms of the Board of Ed, they have the curriculum fair that is gonna be happening on May 26th between 5:00 P.M. and 7:00 P.M. So if you have the opportunity, please make sure that you come out. The art show is gonna be in the middle school cafeteria, and they're also going to be, uh, discussing some upcoming facilities projects and showing off some student work. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Greczynski?
Thank you, Matt. Um, as you know, our Borough crediting project has started this, uh, actually today. Um, they're milling some of the streets, and just be cautious as you drive over somewhere if some of the manholes are raised going at you. Uh, weather permitting, they will continue on. Uh, DPW has sort of hydrogen flushing going on from May 2nd to the 19th. Right now, they're doing the south end of town, um, and if anyone here, let their neighbor know and everything like that, too, to be vigilant in the morning. Turn on your water, just, uh, let it run for a while, flush it, water closet a few times and everything, or run the bathtub, uh, water to clear it out, and it'd be just fine. All right, and as they move out, I'll go to Area 2 and Area 1, be north end. Uh, the Office on Agent has started a few, the problems they've re-implemented. Uh, they have the household repair program for the seniors, uh, going on again. Uh, they're also gonna be having a flea market and are looking for donations, and the donations are gonna go to the South River Trust and the South River Pet Program. Um, the items for the flea market are good, usable, in good condition, household goods, clothing, and what have you. Um, they also have a craft club coming up, an Armchair Travel, uh, I'm going, excuse me, Armchair Travel Club, and a monkey niggel. Uh, please take a look at the website, everything, there's quite a bit to offer for as far as the Office on Agent knows. And, uh, let some of your friends who, who do not have internet service or a computer or watch TV 35, let them know about some of the things that are going on. With that, that's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ware?
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Shade Tree Commission will be meeting this week, so I don't have too much. I do know they have a few applications of tree removal to review. Uh, they just finished up their Lego drive, and I want to say the, uh, student who helped the Shade Tree Commission, Environmental Shade Tree Commission, um, do this Lego drive, they were able to get, uh, 197 pounds of Legos to be able to donate back to the Boys and Girls Club to help people who aren't as fortunate to be able to have Legos as well, reusing something instead of just throwing it out. So congratulations to the student who helped us out to do that. Um, and our meeting will be this week. The library board, I just wanna say they were very successful with their book sale that they had over, uh, the kids' spring break. Uh, there's still an empty seat on the Library Board of Trustees, Mr. Ware, and just adding a reminder of that. Um, and just look on their website, coming soon, they'll have their summer programs that they'll be, um, doing at the library. Other than that, I also just wanna mention that the Community Garden, they're opening Uh, other than that, I also just want to mention that the community garden, they're opening this past weekend. And I'm sure they still have a few beds left if anybody's interested in being a part of the community garden. Uh, I know a lot of their beds that they do get, some are, you know, family and friends that do it, others donate most of their stuff to the food bank and as well as the food bank having some to be able to provide their residents with fresh produce. So, um, that's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. President Seau?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the only I have is the EDC will be meeting on May the 18th. Uh, we've had a lot of input from different contractors and, um, things have been, everything seems to be moving in the right direction. Do I have a rundown there?
Okay. Uh, I just have one thing. Madam Clerk, you can, uh, cancel Wednesday's meeting. The, uh, moving on to the agenda of public comments, if anyone in the public would just have any comments.
Give your name and address.
Salazar Gucho, 1040, which turned by. Um, last year, the, uh, infrastructure bill was passed for 1.2 trillion. Is there any way that we can look into the federal government about giving, getting us money, grants to repaste the border lines in town?
I've asked about that. Um, has the documentation been put out for that yet?
That's what the stimulus money is.
No, that's separate. This is the infrastructure bill that was passed by bipartisan in Congress in the Senate. That's not to do with the, uh, with the relief bill.
I don't, I don't think you've heard anything about that. Usually you have to apply for it.
Right. Because there is a thing on Gov, uh, the Clean Water Infrastructure. The bill offers local ordinance grant money to improve the six in water pipelines and infrastructure. Because they're applying for federal funds for improvement of the water quality within your community, replacing lead pipes, addressing water containment, improving dam infrastructure and addressing challenges followed by droughts. So like maybe something that could be a proposal put together from Bruce, maybe Art, send it into the federal government, find out where it is to maybe get money to even help with the lead lines are going to the houses because that might be also be included to save people money, save the town money. Something I think should really be looked into.
Well, they probably haven't announced it yet, but if we could be ready to jump on it, we could get it.
I thought there's a plan to get it presented, it might go through even faster.
Yes, definitely. Gentlemen?
If you can send me that email order. And then, I don't know if that's the infrastructure in Trenton or if that's federal, so...
Yeah, this is, this is from the federal government, I think.
Yeah, but a lot of times they give it to the states, they say your state, you give it out, then, you know, like...
I just thought maybe it's something you guys can look into.
Oh, definitely. It'd be kind of the Ford of Art and then he'll put it to Joe and I perhaps, and then we can get into that shortly. Thank you.
That's it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Did you have some pictures?
Hi, Richard Byrne, 11 Basset Place, um, on the Environmental Commission. We are sponsoring a curbside recycling event, um, this Saturday and Sunday.
Next Saturday, is that it?
Next Saturday.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth and 15th. And, uh, you know, set it out of the curb, people will drive, take what they want. Um, we had it put on the borough website. It was also published in the paper, the flyer on how to sign up. And then, um, we were supposed to give the map to put on the website for people to pick up, uh, stuff, um, the night before. Because if you publish it too early, the snipers come in and take all the good stuff. And then 8:00 in the morning, oh, all the good stuff's gone. So, um, um, registration deadline is 6:00 PM on May 12th. And, uh, yeah, um, um, also, we, we did the inspections on, uh, the trees and there are some real whoppers over there by the Portuguese club that we're going to, we're going to act on Thursday night. Um, and they're all pear trees. So I don't know if we're going to look at doing a revision of which trees are permitted in the public right of way and we're probably going to take the calorie pear off that. Because...
For a while, they were the big thing to do.
Yeah. And, uh, yeah, and our, uh, planning board meeting, um, on the 17th is the kickoff of the master plan revision workshops. And, uh, Chair Sidney Wilk had asked for all the stakeholders to attend the first meeting to get a sense of how involved you want to be in the various workshops. So, um, looking forward to that. Mr. Byrne?
Thank you. Anyone else on first call, second call, third call? Motion made by Councilman Gindy, seconded by Councilman Seau. All in favor? Against? The House has it. Moving on to the consent resolution as there are no mayoral appointments. Right on the floor.
Resolution 139, accept April 11th, 2022, regular and executive minutes. Resolution 140, request permission for dedication by rider for recreation park renovations. Resolution 141, authorize cancellation of property taxes and approve total disabled veteran status for 51 Daly Street. Resolution 142, authorize collector of utility revenue to make circle refunds. 143, appoint Gerald P. Solomon as a volunteer firefighter to Summit and Dew Company. 144, appoint Kenneth Zabo as a lineman apprentice to the electric utility department. 145, appoint Mark LaBella as summer help to Department of Public Works. 146, authorize South River Day's youth football to conduct coin toss events. 147, authorize the bills and claims list.
There should be a resolution, uh, accepting this. Uh, if there's someone going to be abstaining, they should not make the, make the motion for the approval of this. Motion by Councilman Ballas, seconded by Councilman Olivera. Over call.
Councilman Ballas? Yes. Councilman Gindy?
Yes, with exceptions here, 143.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes, with the exception for, um, resolution 141.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seau?
Yes, with the extension from 143 and on 147, number 21-02865.
Resolutions have been adopted. There's no new business that needs to be read separately, so now we come to our government body comments, starting in reverse order. Uh, Councilwoman Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Before I go on to my comments, I just had, um, two questions about the first reading of the ordinance 16 and 17. I just wanted to know who brought them up. And originally, I thought when we did, uh, we amended, uh, an ordinance, we kind of kept what was there just so we knew what we were changing. So I was just curious as to how this came about and what are exactly are we changing on the ordinance?
16 was parking for the commercial vehicles in residential zones. Um, we have gotten numerous complaints of attractive trailers parking on Water Street, Martin Street and Colesway. So, um, the fines will remain the same for regular, you know, prohibited parking, overtime parking for vehicles, but on the large commercial vehicles, the fines will be increased to stop these people from parking on you, excuse me, residential streets.
So that's the 193-5.2? That's for commercial vehicles?
No, 193-9.1A1. There's two different, there's two different ones there. There's A and then there's A1. And it's for the commercial vehicles.
And that's the first offense, $100, second offense. So what was it prior to that?
$10.
Just $10?
Yeah. And they were just parking there, coming down to the police station or wherever, paying their fine, they're $10, and then parking there again at night.
Okay. And then it says per calendar year. Who's going to keep track of that?
That'll come across in the courts as they're paying the fines. So on record of it.
Would it not go to whoever puts the violation together?
I mean, depending, the way I understand it.
Okay. I'm asking this because, one, I didn't know what was changed, but also now that you're saying that it was the commercial vehicles, I thought that's a zoning, a zoning violation.
Not when it's on the street.
Not when it's on the street.
If it's on property, zoning.
Okay. And we're allowed to do that on county roads?
Residential, residential parks. And that's where, that's where everybody's complaining. It's really, it's really bad down on Water Street, Martin, Elizabeth. I mean, seriously bad. I went down there at night and when it got to the people calling and complaining, and they're having two or three tractor trailers just lined up going down Water Street.
We've also, I know in the past, the police department had complaints about the trucks waiting on Herman Street for the ale company to open up as well. But I, I never thought they actually fined them because they were waiting or idling.
No, they're not, they're not the ones I'm talking about.
No? No, that's right. That's also residential, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, but that's delivery. That's delivery. That's something different. This is trucks that are actually parked overnight on the streets. That's nothing to do with deliveries. Because they, there's deliveries of large trucks on, on, uh, Grand Avenue too. And that's delivery. That's nothing to do with...
This is the area by the ice cream, Colesway, Water Street, um, on the side of, um, you know, Roski's building, you know, Russell, Herman, Russell.
Well, see, Herman is the one I'm just talking about. And it's not deliveries. I know they open at a certain hour and some of those trucks were getting there at like 3:00, 4:00 in the morning and just idling and waiting for that business to open.
That shouldn't be.
I've heard residents complain about that. I know they call...
Well, that shouldn't be. If they were just there to unload, that's one thing. If they're there...
And they prefer it to open.
Yeah, no, that, that should not be. They should not be allowed to park there. And especially idling.
Well, I've heard that from residents on that street, that they've called numerous times.
Are they calling headquarters?
Numerous times and then, but like they're sitting there waiting for the business to open. Because there's no residents.
Yeah, that shouldn't, no, they should not be parked there.
There's an idling.
Yeah, there's an idling law too, and you can't disrupt a resident because there's a truck waiting to unload. If it was something where he was backing in during the day, unloaded, leaving, that's one thing. But they should not be idling and sitting in the residential zone. And they should just call police headquarters and headquarters will send a car down here. They'll have a move.
And then the, the salary positions, what was being changed there?
Some of the recreation programs that are on...
That are new?
That are new. And then some of the minimums and maximums were changed, so. For example, a construction official had a higher minimum, but when we do the resolution to pay the construction official, it's at a lower rate now, so that's, we'll get down. Anyone who's approved, that will be approved by resolution, I should know.
Okay.
So these are just the ranges.
And what were the other ones? I'm sorry.
Uh, mostly were recreation, which was changed by ordinance. And when you did the recreation ordinance prior for the titles, they now reflect here too as coordinator and part-time coordinator. And then inspectors for construction, office on Agent, quote administrators, and stuff that will all correspond to what people are making. Any change, anyone's salary will be in front as a resolution.
And then I saw that we put the deputy construction official, was that an actual position already or are we just changing the ranges?
Then there, so we're just doing a range and then if it's ever needed, that will also come in front as a resolution. But that's just there for a range right now, so no one's...
But is that a new position or was that an existing position? That's what I'm asking.
There was nothing in the salary ones prior.
So there was never a construction, deputy construction official?
I don't think we ever hired one either. Yeah, so there was no range, so we now have a range and...
Because that was brought up at the last meeting, we were told that there had been a position.
There was a deputy construction official. By title only, that was me for the last 10 years under Glenn.
With no pen. With no ranges, now there is a range if we name a deputy construction official.
Okay. And then the inspectors are paid by hour. Thank you for clarifying that for me because there were people who thought that our, um, subcode officials were being paid per inspection. And it's by the hour.
Yes.
So this was your ordinance? I was just asking who brought up the ordinance?
Yeah, I did. I mean, Art and I did, but this is just to correlate with, you know, new recreation programs and stuff, so we want to make sure everything agrees. But any dance approved will be done by council, individual.
Okay, thank you. I attended a webinar to, this, today, this afternoon. It was a Safe Streets and Roads for All webinar. It was done by the federal DOT. Um, they are coming out with grant money very soon. So this was to let, um, people know. There was over, I think, 3,000 people attending this webinar today. It was, um, had a lot of good information. They are ready to give out grants by mid to end of May. And this will be funding to develop or update a comprehensive safety action plan. A lot of this has to do with, um, improving and making our streets safer. Um, so I'm hoping to get more information and look into this for our borough. They made it clear that, um, each state would, could only receive about 15% of its funding, so like not all the, I think it was $3 trillion. I'm not so sure of the amount, but not all the funding can go to just one state, so only 15% of the money that they'll have each year will be able to go to each state. And, uh, they did say they were going to accommodate more rural areas so that it doesn't go to just big cities. Um, so it is something that I'm going to hopefully look into for the borough to make our streets safer. May is also, uh, Bike Month and Keep Middlesex Moving has a lot of programs for incentivizing people to ride more of their bikes. They're also pledging to donate money to local, uh, food banks or give out food donations to local food banks if you pledge to ride your bike more. So, um, there's more information on Keep Middlesex Moving if you look them up on Facebook for that. Other than that, I hope we will try to go to our, uh, master plan information sessions. I think that's, uh, very beneficial to update our master plan. A lot of things have changed within the last 10 years and I hope, uh, people are excited and have more ideas to keep South River, um, growing and improving any way they can, whether it's in the business district, the residential district. Um, there's a lot of zones in our town and there's a lot of improvements we can do to make South River better, so, uh, please go out to the planning meeting on May 17th. My last question, Mr. Mayor or anybody, I believe Ms. Ballas, you're on the Arts and Heritage. What is the status of South River Day?
South River Day will not be on Front Street. Same plans. Art, we're trying still to look into a stage for them, correct?
Put in the application.
Good.
Check with them tomorrow and see if they accept.
Request a stage for their displays and their banners, so that request is in. And we've had a meeting started, we're close at our meeting. They have all the arrangements made for the street vouchers and the, uh, meeting was very happy. Everything is going along, so everything's going along for June 18th.
I hope to see advertisement. I know things came out already, so if we're going to...
Yeah, well, that will be in June. We're, we're trying to, you know, uh, maybe get some posters and they, we, they will be on the brush site and then, but the only thing that's changing is we're, it's the same date, but it's on Front Street now.
Okay. That's all I have. I hope everyone has a wonderful Mother's Day. Councilwoman Ballas will be on the Mother's Day. And, um, that's it. That's my, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank the, the police, the fire department, Robo Johnson for all they do and especially the DPW for keeping the town clean and, uh, taking care of us. Spring is strong. Watch out for children. Cut your grass. Mind your pets. And don't put your book, book pickup out two weeks before you call the DPW, please. With that, with that, any care.
Thank you. Councilman Olivera?
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, Joe, I want to thank you for applying for the rider for Parks and Rec. I know we're going to have a happy advisory board. The purpose of this, you know, currently what has been happening is if someone wants to donate money, the money will go into the general fund and Joe would have to allocate the money to that specific line item. And it just, what we noticed is it was becoming a little bit of a hassle to track and what was brought up was potentially having its own account in the trust. So I know the, the, uh, direct advisory board is something that, this is something we've wanted for a while, since Mr. Gindy does the liaison. So the fact that we were able to, to get it is to be fine, so I just want to thank you again. H, DPW guys have done an awesome job with the fields. Um, the parks are clean, as clean as they can be, you know, as kids are out of school now, you know, we tend to see more and more trash. Please, if you go to a park, uh, I don't know if there's anything we can do to assist in maybe putting some more garbage cans out there. Uh, but again, the DPW guys are doing an awesome job. I know their Mondays after the weekend is probably picking up trash on the parks. So thank you again for, for everything. And to the moms, Happy Mother's Day. Uh, Councilwoman Mayor, Councilwoman Ballas, of course, my wife, can't forget her. Wallace, which is my wife, can't forget her. But Happy Mother's Day to everyone, and see everyone up next week.
Councilman Wallace?
I'm going this way, but if you wish.
No, 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 no. I just want to let everybody be aware of the new stop signs that are going up. I know the one on Camden Foot Hills is there. And we, you know, could be unfortunate because people want to pay attention to it. Yeah. But I guess they'll be used to it. Now, when will the rest, I know there's, is there a schedule for that? When they're gonna be going up to different areas? And I know the signs are up to work.
Yeah, we're gonna shoot for every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday?
The next couple of weeks, yeah. The police have to give a week's notice.
Okay, I know, for the flashings.
Weather permitting, it'll be done on a Wednesday.
Okay, good. Just be aware. I know both of them are getting used to the one sort of by Morningside and James. Let them on, don't forget the one on Camden Avenue and Foot Hills Drive.
Morningside and David.
David, yeah. Then they're gonna, they're not on up the other way. This also is Teacher Appreciation Week. I would like to wish the teachers that are in my family, and I have a few, a great week. And, you know, a teacher is a very important person. I had some great teachers going through South River and the high school, and some of the lessons that they taught me, I still remember today, and some of their saying, Mr. Mondrum, I don't know if it's time we'll cast for you, but I think that sign, for anybody that went to South River Junior High, there was that sign around that clock. But I appreciate all the hard work teachers do. So, you know what, this week, thank the teacher. Also, Happy Mother's Day, Councilwoman Mara, my mother, my sisters, my nieces. And you know what, to fathers who are now mothers, who are acting as mothers, that's definite for that. And with that, that's all.
Okay. The councilman, yeah.
Very simple.
My dear lady, it's simple.
The weather is here, it's getting better and better. The kids are out and running around. Please be careful, especially with the new stop signs going up. I happen to, believe it or not, be on, I'm sorry, on Camden Avenue in the last past two days quite a few times, but I can't tell you how many people blew that stop sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Pay attention. And Happy Mothers to, Happy Mother's Day to all. Andrea, Jure, and.
Forgot Andrea, I'm sorry.
No, I should have ever.
And on, and on. And Lisa.
All the mothers.
Thanks, people.
Oh, yeah, Jason too. That's all you got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman President?
Council President?
Speaker Seau?
Again, just to reiterate, yes, the kids are out playing. Please be aware that they can be run in the street. Please, the speeding, be aware of the speed limits, be aware of the children. As everybody has brought up about the four-way stops, they're going up. This will hopefully eliminate a lot of the speeding, and it'll just keep our streets a lot safer when the children are out. Summertime's here, people are gonna be cutting the lawns, doing edging. Do not blow the grass out into the street. That does clog up the sores. So try, please pick up the grass, put it in the recycling bags. And our DPW picks up grass clippings on, certainly Monday, Monday, every Monday, they pick up the grass clippings. So it's the paper bags.
I know.
Yeah, okay, paper bags, with paper bags. And lastly, to everybody, the list is very, very, very long. Happy Mother's Day to everybody.
Well said, sir. I had the honor to be invited to the Eid Festival today in the Cerebral High School. Ramadan has ended, and today is the festive day of Eid, the Islam faith. It was quite an event, and I'm happy that I went. A number of things are happening. Mr. Grchensky reminded me that May 4th, the fourth will be with us, but the bags, the plastic bags will not. BagUpNJ.com is where you go to find out more information about this. Bring your own bags when you go to especially shopping centers, the big supermarkets. Stop and Shop, ShopRite, already some of them are digging longer, have the plastic bags there. They're using them up, and that's it. Bring your own. The May Women's Service is open to the public, I believe, Chief, that things can come down. And it's a very nice, simple ceremony, short ceremony. I unfortunately will not be there, because I'll be at the mayor's convention, but I do urge the public to go. Also, to the planning board meeting on May the 17th, that does concern the master plan. You know, there's a number of questions when we voted on it last year. This is going more in depth. It has, I mean, since our last one was before Sandy, a lot has changed. And we have to work to changes in the law, but also looking as to where we want South River to go. There are a lot of questions, and frankly, there are no right answers. But it's just, what do we want out of South River? So that's something that's coming up. Knights Columbus are having breakfast on May 22nd. Watch for other events that are coming up in South River. It is a happening place. Not only are events happening, but also the streets are being paved, although not tomorrow for Whitehead Avenue. Surprise, surprise. The hydrants are being flushed. Please look out after it. I mean, it's all over Facebook, but somehow other people just don't seem to get it. So, you know, look out for that. And last but not least, again, a Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, to the guardians, the fathers, to everyone who watches out for children. They need protection, especially in this day and age. If there's nothing else to come before us.
Motion closed.
And there's a motion to adjourn the meeting by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Wallace. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? The ayes have it. We'll see you on the 23rd of May.